Seven o'clock. I got this big pole right here in front of me.
That's, sorry about that. Structural.
Who designed this building?
All right, so. I am State Representative Howard Mosby. I chaired the DeKalb House delegation. And this is the first of three town hall meetings that we do before the legislative session starts. This is the first time that we've done them this early in the year, but we wanted to kind of get on the front side of, of the elections process and all of the things that happened in the back half of the year around Thanksgiving and Christmas. So we felt that it would be better to do around this time of the year. So hopefully this works well for the constituency. Thank you for coming out. This is your government at work. This is one of our listening sessions. We have three set up for DeKalb County, one in North DeKalb, one in South, and one in Central DeKalb. So this is the first of three. Glad that you all were able to come out. I have my posse with me, my team, plus one. The interloper is here. And so with that, I'll start with my good friend, Mike Jacobs, and let him say whatever you'd like to say.
Well, we're, we're here primarily to hear from everyone, so I'm, I'm, I'll, I don't really have any comments on the front end, but I may have responsive comments as we go through the, the town hall meeting this evening. I always go to all three of these that we hold every year. And it's always interesting to hear from folks all across the county prior to the legislative session. We're coming up now in 2015. I'm Mike Jacobs. I represent Brookhaven in the State House. I also represent, about a quarter of my district is in the city of Sandy Springs over in Fulton County, completely irrelevant to this particular meeting. And I do have a small piece of the city of Shambly up around the Huntley Hills neighborhood in my district as well. It's good to see you all tonight, and I look forward to hearing from you.
We'll let the interloper go next.
The interloper. I'm Fran Miller, state senator, and I represent North DeKalb. I also represent a portion of Fulton County, three precincts, and also represent Peachtree Corners in Gwinnett County. And like Mike, we, we both represent this particular area. And I too like to try to attend all three of the meetings we do. This one here, there will be one in Decatur, and there'll be one down at the Port of Sanford Center later on this month. So again, appreciate you all taking the time to come out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Mary Margaret Oliver. I represent House District 82, which goes from the Decatur Courthouse up Claremont Road, both sides, and includes parts of Shambly and parts of Brookhaven. Obviously, I and all of my constituents in Middle DeKalb in that geographic territory are subject to a lot of different city and annexation proposals, which I assume that some of you are here to talk about tonight. I am interested in your questions and in your views, and look forward to hearing from you. I will be slipping out a little bit before eight for a church meeting I'm obligated to go to. Thank you.
Representative Kendrick.
I'm Representative Kendrick. I'm the secretary of the delegation.
All right. Thank you very much. And we also have, the mayor just walked in. We are in his, in his lovely city. I get a chance to sit in his seat, see what that's like. It's hot up. It is very hot up here. And I have some other elected officials out in the audience. Well, you got the whole city council here.
Rebecca Williams.
Bates Madison.
Joe Gebbia.
Welcome to Brookhaven.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming here. Really appreciate y'all.
Yes, Lythonia.
There you go. Excellent. And we have the former mayor of Decatur here, Bill Floyd. All right. So this is, this is in fact a listening session. As Representative Oliver said, there are a lot of issues facing us here in DeKalb County, a lot of issues facing us as a state. One of the things that we like to do in this listening tour is to, to get a feel from the public, what is it that you feel? What do you think should be our priority in going into next year's legislative session? We'd be glad to answer any questions that you have for any one of us in terms of what that legislation will look like, what we should be focused on, what those things that you think that this county needs in terms of, I guess, any issue that we can address from a legislative standpoint. And so we're opening the door, and we're making ourselves available to you. I would just ask that you come up to the, to this mic here and ask, and say your name, and then ask your question. So with that, all, all minds clear? I would be glad to take the, the first.
You want to introduce Dorsey?
She did. You, you were talking. All right, so we'd be glad to.
Who's first?
Who's? That's right.
Well, I have a question.
There you go.
If Brookhaven loses its case before the Court of Appeals to Shambly, will you appeal to the Georgia Supreme Court? It's a lawyer question.
We're, we're not involved in litigation at present. We, we stopped funding it, our end of it, you know, a few months ago. So we don't know what will happen at that time. So it's kind of out of our hands.
Will you take a public vote whether to appeal or not, win or lose?
Um, we, we are, when the appeal was made, we were not involved in the litigation. So we didn't, we don't have control. There's part, I think the Highwoods Properties is the one that's the appellant right now, and they have the right to pursue, appeal if they want. We have no dog in that fight as far as from a legal perspective.
Do you anticipate completing the CHOA and Executive Park annexation before Christmas?
We have received an application. I understand tomorrow we're going to be looking at that application and determining if it's something that's going to be feasible for Brookhaven or not. So they came to us, we didn't pursue them, and it's, yeah, I would, I would wager that if, any decision on that will be made before the end of the year. That's what I would, that was a wagering. If wagering was legal, I would make that wager.
I had a question for y'all. Bates Madison, Brookhaven City Council. Thanks for coming here tonight. My question is to you, just as, as a courtesy, I, I know that, that y'all are mostly House members here, but is, is Jason Carter ever, why is he not here? Is, or is he not a part of the DeKalb County delegation? It's just House members?
To be, to be, to be, to be fair to Jason, okay? If I was running for governor of the state of Georgia, I probably wouldn't be here tonight either. He, I know he was down at Georgia Public Broadcasting till at least six o'clock because he and Governor Deal were talking to Gears, which is the Early Learning Initiative. He probably couldn't get here from downtown by seven o'clock even if he wanted to. So to be, to be, to be fair to, to be fair to Jason, I, I wouldn't have expected him here tonight.
Well, you know, it's, I appreciate you being here. You do represent Brookhaven as a state senator, and he does represent Brookhaven as a state senator. And so it would be nice, we certainly would welcome him to come up to Brookhaven to have him here. My question for y'all though is about the DeKalb County leadership and the CEO role. Is there, is, do y'all have a position on, on how you see that happening in the legislative session? Is that something that's going to be brought up? You know, I know that the committees are working on the form of government for DeKalb County. Do you have any insight on how that might shake out? And do you have a personal preference on if the CEO form is better, or if a county manager is a better form of government?
Okay, so that was, that was a lot in that one question, but I, right now, I don't know if anyone is working on any specific piece of legislation around that. It's my understanding from the task force standpoint that they have dropped the CEO issue from their agenda.
I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think that the Blue Ribbon Committee that's been put together by Kathy Gannon is studying the issue. I think there are some members of the task force that are still thinking about some mission of the CEO. I have said, I've been asking and working with the Blue Ribbon Commission on who among their crowd is drafting various proposals on issues of ethics or issues of procurement, issues of CEO. And I am looking at those, looking for those drafts to come forward, and I assume that there's going to be drafts produced by those groups, and I assume that they will be prefiled. That's my guesstimate. It's an educated guesstimate today. I personally prefer the county manager system to the CEO.
I, I would agree with that. I, I prefer the county manager form of government to the CEO system that we have. The problem is that we've, we've, you know, we've never really had a majority of the, of the House and Senate delegations in DeKalb in favor of that. I'd like to see us get there at some point. It was, for that reason, mainly just the inability to do it from a political standpoint, kind of taken off the task force's agenda fairly early in the process. But now there's some draft, I don't want to even call them draft recommendations. There is a set of recommendations that some of the task force members have worked on that are a very preliminary set of possible recommendations that we're just beginning to kind of crystallize. And they do include doing away with the CEO form of government. The other thing I will say, so I, you know, it, it may well still be a recommendation of the Operations Task Force. If it is, I'll, I'll certainly fully support that. I think the only impediment to, to it occurring is, is a political one. The other thing I'll say is this. There are some very good recommendations among the Blueprint DeKalb recommendations that I, I think absolutely should find their way into the Operations Task Force recommendations. And, and those are things like strengthening the DeKalb Board of Ethics so that it's no longer political appointees by the, by the county commission, but rather, you know, made by someone else who doesn't have a, a particular dog in the hunt of what the Ethics Board would be doing. That's the first thing. And then the second thing is strengthening, is strengthening the auditing functions of the county government, ensuring, and ensuring that there are the resources necessary for a good auditor to do their job. I think those are an outstanding set of recommendations by the Blueprint DeKalb Group, and I would not be surprised at all to see them adopted in some form or fashion by the Operations Task Force and then brought to the General Assembly.
All right. The one thing I would add, last year in the Senate, I had a bill to make the CEO race nonpartisan. That was sort of an interim step to do something to show the citizens we were trying to deal with this. It passed the Senate. It did not pass the House. So that means it's dead because the year is over. The sentiment on the committee early on in the session was that we felt as a group, politically, as Mike just stated, that we couldn't get a bill to change the CEO form of government out of the House. I'm not going to say about the Senate at this point because it never came into discussion. Probably would be a similar situation, but at that point in time. And then by the efforts of two or three people on the commission, they've come back and said, well, we still need to look at doing this. So I will certainly be supportive to eliminate the CEO position. I agree with Mary Margaret as well as Mike, that I would prefer the, you know, the county chairman form of government at this point in time. However, we make the recommendation, let's assume we do, to change the CEO form of government in the interim, as well as that recommendation. I would say to you, what we can certainly accomplish at the task force, if we can't get the recommendation through the delegation, is that we can at least change the duties of commissioners, and we can change the duties of the CEO, and we can eliminate areas where there's overlap. You know, there was a court case years ago, Leona Levitan was CEO, that basically said that, when it's all said and done, our form of government to CEOs have been evil and desperate. And with all due respect to Mr. Maloof, that's why it was created that way. So if we can change at least the structure line by line, if you would, okay, in the Organization Act, maybe we can get some clarity there if we can eliminate the CEO position. But I would concur with these two on either side of me. I would prefer that personally, so we'll see what happens down the road. But I do, I do think the task force, to their credit, I believe, I believe Lee May last week also reiterated again that he wanted to do away with the CEO form of government. Of course, in the next week or so, we might know who our CEO really is. We'll see what happens, so I don't know. Now, when mayors come up, they're usually looking for money, so I just want you all to be prepared.
Well, if he has them, we'll definitely take it.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Deborah Jackson. I'm the mayor of the city of Lythonia, and I also am now serving as the president of the DeKalb Municipal Association.
Oh, good.
Yes, you are.
So I'm speaking in two capacities, and, and one of them has to do basically with the issue of incorporation and annexation. I have recently seen some maps, particularly as relates to South DeKalb, that with the creation of the city, of the proposed city of Stonecrest and the proposed city of South DeKalb, there would not be any opportunity for any of the existing cities, Lythonia, Stone Mountain, Pine Lake, Clauston, to be able to do any annexation. And so the concern is that, you know, you have this flurry of activity that's taking place. And so as in existing cities, we really are interested in being able to have an opportunity to do some annexation over a period of time. DeKalb County, as we have known it, has clearly changed. And the issue is, you know, how do we really engage in a meaningful conversation about the future of the county as relates to its existing cities and the creation of new cities? Because right now, it's sort of, there's this overlap, and you have people moving on different tracks without any real conversation taking place. So I would hope and that the delegation would seriously take into consideration that fact that the existing cities are very much interested in having the opportunity to expand and bring more people into the area. I mean, there are many people, you know, Lythonia has a situation where, you know, we have, there are 93,000 people that have a Lythonia address, but only 2,000 of them currently live within the city limits. But there are those who are around our borders who are very much interested in being part of the city. And so we would like to be able to have the opportunity. I know Clauston is also interested in doing annexation, as well as the other cities. So I would just implore that the delegation give some consideration and maybe provide some type of forum where there would be an opportunity for people to come together to do something that actually makes sense. Because the city, the county is strong when all its parts are strong. I don't know if there's a question.
The DeKalb Municipal Association did a really good job, in my opinion, last year of putting together a comprehensive plan on annexation for all the cities. I thought that was a very good plan of seeing y'all work together on proposed annexations. And, and you are aware, and other folks are aware, I introduced as a prefile, House Bill 22, couple of, for the last term, to try to do some economic planning to the annexation new city proposal mechanism in a comprehensive way. I do think that's a very big need.
You know, you raised a good point. One of the things that the task force is trying to do, because Mike and I are on that, we realize that if this, if primarily North DeKalb right now for municipalization effort, and I understand Briar Cliff and Lakeside have reached a tentative agreement.
Oh, is that so?
But at the same time, a lot of us are very concerned about the balance of DeKalb County, about to make sure that people continue or will get the services that they require at an affordable price. Now, whether that's via annexations by you all, however that's going to be, I do think there's an awareness of that within the task force. It's been discussed. And I don't think that there's anything that's been ruled out at this point in time. And perhaps if we have existing cities doing further annexations to take care of people, maybe that's the way to go. So your efforts are noted, okay? They have not been ignored. And I don't want you to think, just because people keep talking about new cities, that we're not cognizant who's been at the dance for a number of years. So I hope that helps somewhat. Mike can maybe add on that, too.
Well, I, I would just say that the calculus hasn't really changed with regard to annexations and how they might be accomplished. I mean, you've got the statutory annexation methods, obviously, which can be done without the General Assembly's involvement. And then you've got the, and then you've got the possibility of doing a legislative annexation. As far as legislative annexations go, they are local legislation, so they require a majority of the delegation, House and Senate. And as well, you know, on, on annexations, I generally tend to defer to the, the local legislators who actually represent that area. I received a, a significant volume of email from one person over the course of the past two weeks, significant being three or four emails. But for one person, that's a lot, right? Who's, was interested in an annexation, I guess, down around the Stone Mountain Freeway area into Stone Mountain. It would overlap with the proposed city of Tucker, and, and his constant refrain was, well, why aren't you listening to me? Why aren't you listening to me? And I, I mean, my response was, well, what you really need is to go talk with the legislator who represents that area and get them to buy into this annexation that you want to do. And obviously, you need to be talking with the city as well. But, but in terms of an annexation of a particular area of the county, if it's not an area I represent, I mean, one of the things that I would be looking to do is to listen to the legislators who actually represent that area.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you all for your service.
Thank you for taking the presidency of that group, too.
And we had Representative Hoakum join, join us. Go ahead, you want to say something?
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I'm a little bit late. There was another meeting in my district, so I stopped by there first, but I'm happy to be here with you all this evening. Thanks.
Welcome. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming to Brookhaven. You're always welcome here. I have a question for you about the Economic Development Authority at DeKalb. I congratulate you on your bold decision last year to turn that over to an IGA. Can you give me the status of what has happened in the last year with them and what you see coming down the future?
I know that they are.
That's Vaughn, is it?
Yeah. I know, my perception is that they have been having a, a planning process in connection with the Chamber of Commerce. And that head position has been open, and the Development Authority head position. So there's been an ongoing conversation about how to share some task of that. I think they've retained Doug Stoner, who has been assisting.
Oh, that's what, they hired him.
Assisting in making a more comprehensive economic development plan. And I don't know what their timetable is.
I have no.
They, they hired Doug Stoner, I know that, because he was out at our meeting. If you remember right, at Brookhaven.
Right.
When the governor and lieutenant governor were there last week. I was told, I believe, and I haven't seen it, but I think they've come up with like a hundred-page report, something to the effect of, and now Vaughn Irons is very heavily involved with that.
Yeah.
Because I know that. And he heads, he's one of the co-chairmen of our task force. But we have not seen specifics. In fact, the Atlanta Business Chronicle called me today. And, you know, the, the issue has been, you know, they asked about specifically economic development in DeKalb. And as you know, the major issue is that we've got this cloud hanging over us from a standpoint of, you know, with the CEO's situation, the commission's situation. And, and it's been very, very difficult for people in order to try to go forward based upon that, because obviously, one of the reasons with this Citizens Task Force that we're on is the citizens aren't very comfortable with their form of government and how it's been handled, or money's being handled properly. So that's a real impediment for development in DeKalb, as you know. So, you know, to be fair, where we've seen the major development in the last few years have been in our new cities. I mean, Brookhaven, I mean, we're sitting right up the, the road from it, okay, with Town Brookhaven. I mean, that's been a tremendously successful project, obviously out where I live with the perimeter, and State Farm and all that type of thing. So, but again, we've tried, we've got to try to expand this throughout the entire county. It just makes good sense. It's almost like this region here has become like Atlanta is for the rest of the state. That's how we've become for the rest of the county, and that doesn't work. We've got to make economic opportunity for all. I don't think any of us know the specifics, Joe, I'm sorry. That really hasn't been on the radar yet, but I think it will be going forward. That's the best I can tell you.
Well, what's so exciting about that is it takes a really macro view of the economic development opportunities for dollars being spread and support.
Right.
And it's on the concept of what's good for the city is, is going to be good for DeKalb County, which is great, because if we can do that and do that effectively.
We talked about it, and again, going back to the task force, you actually learn a lot of things when you go down to Decatur. You'll be happy to know that, Bill, when you're down there three Wednesdays a month, that, you know, our commercial tax rate is way out of line versus our surrounding counties. I have learned that. I believe the number's 21. Is that the number, Bill? 21 mills? And it's way out of line compared to the people we're trying to compete against for businesses. So there is an awareness, we just haven't got there yet to be. I hope that answers the best I can come up with at this point.
Well, it doesn't really, but I don't think the answer's to be had yet.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm anxious to see what all comes out, because I think it's going to be a major propeller for us to move forward. Okay, thank you for addressing that.
Joe, you get, you get the prize for stumping all of us.
He's going to take it out of his chair.
I'm feeling, I'm feeling the heat now.
Rebecca had talked, called me earlier and said there were some folks here who were interested in the water bill situation in DeKalb County.
Raise your hand, Sarah.
Okay.
Three.
I've been pretty involved with this situation for the past month, three weeks, really, when the county came here to speak with us, similar, in a similar forum. And CEO May had his, she, head of the water billing department here. And I spoke with him, his name is Gerald Bowers, and I have his email address, so you need to write it down. If you, if you have a pen and paper, if you're having any water bills, if you write this email address down. It's Gerald, G L, G L Bowers at dekalbcountyga.gov. That's G L B O W E R S at dekalbcountyga.gov. And I, the last email I exchanged with him was Friday, and he said that a mass mailing from the CEO's office would be going out to citizens by Friday this week. So giving folks what the issues are, but a lot of, I've had 78 Brookhaven citizens email me, because I asked them to copy me on emails they sent to the county water department. And that, he's been working through these issues. So Gerald Bowers is actually a person you can reach by email, sometimes by phone, but the best way to do it is by email, and he's actually resolved some issues. So it's taking a lot of time. The volume has gone, you know, much higher than he thought it would, and they're working through it. So they're trying.
I appreciate that, because I instigated a lot of it through DeKalb. Got no response from our representative or CEO May. So we have been bills from 400 to $2,000.
Where do you live?
I'm in the Northlake area. Sarah's in Tocco Hills, and I just got fed up with, and finally went to WXRA. I'm the one who did the piece with them, because the emails that were coming in were just pat emails. You've got a leak. It's not our problem.
Right.
Well, we don't all have a leak, and we don't need to get $2,000 water bill. We are single senior citizens living in our home.
Well, what, what they had said was that a certain percentage of bills almost automatically get estimated. They don't even come out and read the meter.
That's correct.
And, and the percentage is a little bit higher than we, we thought. It happened to me as well, and it's happening all over Brookhaven. And as the more I've gone on Facebook or, or just let people know to, you know, copy me on any email you send to the county, it's, we found out that more people's bills are getting estimated. And I, I didn't turn my irrigation meter sprinkler on for six months, and I got a bill for 200 bucks and not even, you know.
Right. Well, here's a $700 bill, living alone. I'm 400 and something living alone. I use my sprinklers.
I, I think you're in Jeff Rader's district, or you're not?
Yes, and that has not helped. Forget him. Forget him.
Let Joe, let Joe make sure he writes that down over there.
He sends out a pat email to every email. I mean, I'm one of those who just, I'm sorry, but I just flooded emails to different departments. We have a neighborhood blog that covers 1,098 homes, neighborhoods in the area. And I sent out a blog, and these are the replies that I got.
Well, what's, you know, what's good about cityhood is that, you know, Mike, these are calls you would have been getting before, because I remember my dad feeling those kind of calls, county issues. And, you know, we, we, that's, I feel it's kind of our responsibility if you can't get, you know, we're without a commissioner at all right now in our area. But I think it's important that we try and cross communicate. And if y'all can, I don't know if, what y'all can do, if y'all can communicate with the county as well about the, I'm sure you might have heard something from your constituents about it, but it might help put a little more heat on them.
Well, can I just say, I know this isn't the forum for it.
No, it's fine. You're in a roll, go ahead.
Absolutely.
But I, I started this the early part of August, because I was just floored with my water bill. And I have not used my sprinklers, can't afford to. So by putting out this blog, I found out from my neighbors, $2,000 bills, $1,000 bills, people who are living alone, sent out an email to Jeff Rader, got back a standard email, sent out another email to a, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, Steven Janisack or something like that, standard email, got no help at all. And you cannot go down there and resolve anything, because my friend Sarah, who And you cannot go down there and resolve anything, because my friend Sarah, who got a $700 water bill, went down there in person, they refused to let her see a supervisor. This is what we're facing, and Jeff Rader has been no help. I sent an email to Lee May, I never heard from him. So, I'm just trying to get to the bottom of the problem.
When did it start?
August.
With my latest, my bill came in August, when it was $438.
And the bill before that was around...
$160.
Okay.
And before that was 70.
Yeah, so it started...
And then when I finally did get through to somebody at the water department, she says to me, "We have new meters, and we wave a wand, and we get the reading, and you must have a leak." Well, I don't, a plumber, I don't use my sprinklers, I have no leaks. So, I mean, you know, I need help getting to the right person.
You're still not resolved?
No.
Have you emailed Gerald Bowers?
No, this is the first time I've seen his name.
He's the beleaguered guy who's actually doing all the work, he's actually doing something about it.
Okay, well...
He's the one guy, but he's actually, he is copying maybe your legislator, I don't know, are you, do you represent this area?
No, Jeff Rader.
No, your state legislator.
Oh, state legislator, okay.
Tocco Hills?
Yeah, it's Scott...
Northlake, La Vista, that area we're in.
Scott, there you...
But it goes all the way, it goes all the way down to north DeKalb, these blogs that are in our...
That's Steve, that's Steve Henson.
Okay. I would copy Steve Henson on the email you send to him.
I ask you one question. You said you don't have a leak.
No.
You know, I just ran into this problem at my own house within, okay, within the past year. I had no leaks at my house, I had people out to check them, we couldn't find leaks, we finally discovered the leak was right around the water thing. Unfortunately for me, of course, it was between the water meter and my house, not between the street and the water meter. But, and it was such a tiny leak. But again, I was running, I was living alone, don't you sprinklers? I had three $400 water bills also, so that might be an area they want to check. And also, are you still on the old pipes and everything, those blue pipes that they...
Probably.
Yeah, I was, I didn't know it.
But we've had plumbers out.
Yeah, I mean, the leak, the leak...
We've had sprinkler guys out.
I did, too.
We have, and then they tell you how to look at the meter to see if it moves, and we've done all that. But we need to go get somebody who'll resolve the high cost of these waters.
Did you get this meter replaced?
No.
Get the county to replace the meter?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
I want you to give your information to the head of the delegation, you have a blog with 1,098 residents, right?
Right.
Okay. I think that maybe we can get somebody to contact you.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So if you'd give him your information when you leave here, and he personally...
I would be happy to.
Absolutely, I will call Lee.
Well, he'll call Lee May, or whoever, we'll get somebody to get on the horn to you and try to get this thing resolved.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
And listen, and I will, I've asked...
You too, ma'am.
Permission...
Give him your name, too.
I asked permission from Mr. Bowers about publishing his emails, as he sent them to me, and he said it was okay. So I'll forge you the email he sent me about what they're doing right now, so you can post it on your blog.
Okay.
But I know it's been frustrating, and it's a, you know, I've dealt with it. CEO May almost had his water cut off because of a bill he was saying.
I heard that.
He said it happened before.
Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
All right.
I wanted to tell you, I didn't get a chance, but to tell you, thank you for coming to Brookhaven, I appreciate it. I would like to know, recalling our incorporation effort, I just wanted to know if all of y'all are committed to allowing people to vote on whether to incorporate into DeKalb County or not, now and in the future? If that's something that's, you're generally philosophically opposed to, or you're philosophically in favor of?
In terms, most of them will be referendums. So if we pass a...
That's what I'm saying, allowing referendums, if you're philosophically opposed or in favor.
That'd be the only way that I would want to see it happen. The people will have to say, that's what we're going to do.
Well, I mean, philosophically, I'm in favor of it. The problem in the House is this, you've got, and this is the, and this is what we're trying to resolve in central DeKalb right now, all right? And I, you know, some people like the approach that has been announced out of the House Governmental Affairs Committee, some people don't. I'll let every member speak for themselves in that regard, but you've got three groups that, you know, have different views of what that territory should look like if put out to a referendum and incorporated. And the problem there is that I don't represent any of that area. So, aside from either putting the onus on the groups to work it out themselves, which is what we have done through November 15th, or come up with some kind of process to resolve the differences once and for all, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know that I have a place in, you know, in deciding exactly what that should look like. Do I believe that citizens should have the right to believe, the right to vote on cityhood? Absolutely.
Well, that's the basic question I was asking, because that's not...
The answer to the basic question is yes. Where it starts to fall apart in the House is that at least individually, because, you know, people will show up and say, "Well, you know, you need to do this, or you need to do that," and the only answer I have is I don't represent any of that territory.
Right.
I mean, that's, and so, there's that.
Well, you know, part of the reason I ask that is because in our incorporation effort, there really wasn't a map dispute, you know, there was no real, we were being annexed around us, and there was still opposition to our right to vote to incorporate. And that's kind of what, I want to know if our delegation supports the citizens' right to vote to incorporate, whatever the map may be, is it, do you, do y'all as a delegation feel that that's something that you, I mean, is it philosophically, you're opposed to people incorporating new cities into DeKalb County? Are you in favor of allowing them to decide whether they want to incorporate?
I've answered that question.
Anybody else?
Well, I guess, I'm a little irritated, GMA's never made me man of the year, because of Georgia Municipal Association, since I've been involved in every incorporation from Sandy Springs on, so, but I do think, I think there's a couple of factors here, though, to answer your question. First of all, it's got to be financially viable. That was the problem with the city of Stonecrest, because it was not financially viable. Okay? The other thing is, people have to be realistic about the services that they want in the city. And in DeKalb, every city we have done, as in North Fulton, they've all been full-blown cities, okay? The only place where we had a city light, if you will, was in Peachtree Corners, and it's a different animal over there in Gwinnett than what we have in DeKalb. So, again, it depends upon, I think, that factor, but I think by and large, certainly, certainly I support people's right to vote. But again, I guess, the good news is, my understanding is, at this point, of the three that we're talking about today, Briar Cliff and Lakeside have come to some type of agreement between the two of them, that's why the two of them are sitting back there together. The only person that hasn't at this point in time is Tucker.
I'm holding hands a minute ago.
They're playing, they're singing kumbaya, too, but anyway, but the Tucker situation has not been resolved, but two of the three have evidently resolved, I'm going to say 95% of any issues that they have between them, so that's a very positive. So, from the standpoint of the House, what they've done, try to work it out, that part's been, they're getting there, so that's a good thing. So, and then it'll come to the Senate, whatever they end up doing in the House, because anything's going to be started in the House.
It's clear to me that we have conflicts in our statutes right now about municipalization. Your Shambly versus Brookhaven, which is, involve you, is a fairly significant conflict in our law. And the Georgia Municipal Association is trying to figure out whether the right of people to incorporate, which I supported as sponsor of the Briar Cliff legislation, can be taken to the point where viable cities' economic planning is cut off. I think the example of the Shambly-Brookhaven dispute is a legally fair-minded dispute that's resulted in, today, a very uncertain, the worst thing for business is uncertainty. And this dynamic of conflicting annexation plans and conflicting city borders creates a tremendous amount of conflict and uncertainty that is bad for our county. But I'm the sponsor of the Briar Cliff bill, certainly am supportive philosophically of people being able to incorporate. I have said publicly 1,000 times that all of DeKalb County is going to be municipalized, in my view, in the next, I don't know, whether it's 10 to 20 years, or some portion like that.
I'm glad to see you come around.
We are doing this in the wrong way, Mr. Mayor. We're creating haves and have-nots, and is that a good economic development plan for DeKalb County? Yes or no, Mr. Mayor?
Creating haves and have-nots?
Right.
No, just, when Brookhaven was seeking a vote to incorporation, you opposed us.
I did, but then you got it passed 54%. There was clearly a lot of folks in Brookhaven who were arguing to me that they didn't want it. 54% is not a landslide of victory. The question is, is our current plan create haves and have-nots of disparate governments that are not going to be able to provide services? That's the question in my mind.
Some of those things were said about Brookhaven, I think.
And so, you don't have an opinion on that?
No, no, we're providing services to people who have and people who don't have, and we're doing, providing it all over from Beaufort Highway up to the perimeter. And I just, I'm glad to hear you're supporting cityhood now.
Well, obviously, you knew that, because I was the sponsor of the Briar Cliff bill.
Well, the last vote that I had encountered was you opposed Brookhaven, so that's why I was asking, if the delegation has, in a similar, has a change of heart on incorporation efforts...
Don't speak to the delegation.
Representative Holcomb?
Sure. I think philosophical issues and hypotheticals are fine, but I deal in the real world, and I'm also a pragmatist. So, in terms of going forward, which is probably the most helpful discussion, we could certainly talk about past things, and I'm happy to do that. Going forward, the district that I represent is very interested in having a referendum. I'm supportive of having a referendum, have been on public record of saying that for some time. With that, Brookhaven's annexation plans are troubling to the Lakeside effort, the ones that were announced last week.
The plans, those aren't plans, those are, we received an application, so we can't stop the, we can't shut down the door when somebody submits an application.
You had nothing to do with any preliminary discussions on any level about that, it was total surprise to you.
We had, we had no, we had no involvement, hey, we had no involvement in that.
None at all, okay.
You know, it's flattering that citizens, that people want to come into our city.
That's correct.
But that's, an application was received, just like when somebody submits a plan for a development, we can't say, "No, you can't submit an application." Like I said, we're reviewing the application for the very first time tomorrow in a work session, and we'll consider the facts that they bring to us or not, but we don't have made any decisions, but we can't, we have, it's not our plans as an application received.
I hear you.
Okay, I would, you know, go ahead, Scott.
I think I have the floor. I hear you, but that doesn't change the fact of this very complicated cityhood process, that adds another wrinkle to it, and we're going to have to deal with that. And a proposal for a city is going to be impacted by that because of the potential loss of commercial property. So, if you are supportive of additional incorporation efforts, maybe take that into mind in terms of Brookhaven's impacts on other cities.
Absolutely will.
With that, I was a cosponsor with many people on this row of Shambly, an unincorporated part in DeKalb that wanted to go into Shambly, and Brookhaven got in the way of that.
Right.
And that's still in the courts and is pending, and a lot of taxpayer dollars have been wasted on that.
Right.
So, it would have been good if that had been withdrawn and that money not had been wasted, but that's where we are, and it's still pending in court. So, I supported that referendum, and I support whatever, the right of that referendum to be honored for those people who voted. So regardless of what the Court of Appeals does, my plan for the next legislature is to seal that down, as we did last year. And as you may be aware, Governor Deal vetoed a piece of legislation for that referendum that was passed unanimously in both the House and the Senate, and it had bipartisan legislation. So, I do, or try to represent as best I can, the interests of the district that I represent, and right now, they are interested in potential cityhood and the actual applications, which remain impacted by what's taken place here in Brookhaven.
All right. Senator? I would say this, in all the incorporations, when they were being done, and since I've got three city council members here and the mayor, I won't have to appear before your city council. The premise has always been that the commercial area basically followed the residential. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, that's just how the principle has always been. And as respects, and I'll take Executive Park, and yes, they did approach you all, I understand that. And even though I represent Brookhaven, I'm very concerned about where we're going as an entire county, and if, as Mary Margaret said, if we're going to maybe municipalize the whole area in the next 20 years or whatever, then we've got to make sure there's sufficient revenue to be able to do that in places. I'll remind you, when people wanted to come inside 285 from Dunwoody to pick up all that commercial area, I stopped it. I stopped the border at 285 for that reason, because if that area inside went to Dunwoody, and somebody wanted to be a city inside, which now is now Brookhaven, they wouldn't have all that revenue. I will tell you, the same principle, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, applies to that area outside, or excuse me, inside 85, the Executive Park area. Now, that being said, you have to do what you're going to do, but I would prefer, if I could wave a magic wand, that you let the cities of Lakeside and Briar Cliff see if we can do something with these areas in January, February. If we can't get an initiative passed to create cities in those areas, then go do what you want to do with Executive Park. But I would give it, I would give it through the legislative session and not do anything if at all possible, if I could wave the magic wand. And again, I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just telling you from a standpoint, what I think is best for the county overall, what I think is best for the city movement overall, is that those, that area over there, stay where it is until the Lakeside-Briar Cliff thing gets resolved, that's all. And I'm not asking you to agree with me, I'm just making the observation.
And we'll, you know, as a council, we have an all-discussed...
No, I understand, I get it, I understand.
And we will consider the application, you know, it's not something that's been on my plate.
I understand.
And we were flattered when we were approached, didn't know, didn't see it coming, it wasn't something that was, you know...
No, I perfectly understand, that's fine.
Radar, but it's, you know, to Representative Oliver's point, the corporations and the businesses with the uncertainty, well, a lot of that uncertainty is created by the county itself, you know, people, we've got to do something, because we're not, we don't want to be left out in the cold...
I understand.
...with unincorporated DeKalb. So, there's a, you know, there's uncertainty whether the delegation supports the right of any of those cities to be created, so you have that uncertainty created because of the past history of the delegation when it came to Brookhaven's incorporation. Are we going to be able to be in a city? So, the uncertainty is being created, A, by the DeKalb delegation, and B, by the DeKalb County government, and, you know...
The only point I'm raising to you is, I would ask that by March 31st, we're going to know if Briar Cliff and/or Lakeside are going to be voting for a city next year. And I'm just asking for people to wait till March 31st, that's all.
And one other thing I forgot on that is Dorival, I don't know if there are any Dorival residents here, there's some. This year, I supported efforts to both annex and have a referendum in Dorival, and that was cosponsored by several of the people up here as well. And so, there is a referendum in Dorival, or an unincorporated DeKalb to go into Dorival this year on the November 4th ballot.
We're eliminating the islands.
Good evening, I'm Michelle Henson, and, you know, the whole issue of municipalization is a very interesting one, whereas I've started out with one opinion because of changes throughout the county. I'm not sure that I still hold with that one. But my concern is, as we move forward, is the have and have-nots. My district's very interesting, it's truly central DeKalb, but a huge portion of central DeKalb that is in the south, so to speak, does, it's unincorporated, and it is not being picked up or looked at by any city. There is the new proposed, or talked about city of South DeKalb, which is sort of a misnomer, because it's not strictly South DeKalb, but for lack of a better name, I think that's the one they've picked. That's taking into account 400,000 people, and my question is, I don't see a big difference between being in something that big and being in the whole county, you know, a few hundred thousand folks at that point, and I'm not sure how it's going to go. But you have the issue of commercialization, and we all know that residential costs cities' money, and counties, commercial generates money. money. So we have to ensure that as cities up north farm, that cities are capable of farming down south. We need to look at the legacy pension system, that, you know, at this point, all the cities have so far farmed are not paying it. You know, the other cities, with the exception of Dunwoody and Brookhaven, were farmed way before. You are the two new ones. I think that came in through the Dunwoody one, and the legislation for Brookhaven pretty much copied it. But the question is, how do we move forward and ensure that the burden is not being put on the people, and unincorporated DeKalb only? And, and that's a great concern that's being asked right now. And, you know, is it something that you put into place and phase out over a period of time from this, whatever incorporates? Another question is, does annexation come before incorporation, or does, or how does it work? I mean, does a city who's been around for 120 years, should they have the right to consider annexing something, or does a brand-new city coming in who's never been a city get that territory instead? I mean, and I'm not going to any particular area, this pertains as much to Lethonia as anywhere else. So you have those questions to ask. I did support the Dorival piece that Representative Holcomb carried. I supported the Shambly piece that Mary Margaret carried. So I have supported different things. With regard to cityhood in general, incorporation, I feel very strongly in the local legislation system, and unfortunately, now the cityhood pieces in the past 20 years have dealt with that. Local legislation has been thrown out the window. I have a serious problem with that. Likewise, I have a serious problem with how we're looking at Lakeside, Briar Cliff, and Tucker. Even, you know, Representative Jacobs has said, I don't represent all of it. I have a problem with the potential of five people unnamed at present in the House of Representatives making that decision for DeKalb County, for an area that I represent, that Representative Holcomb and Representative Oliver represent. I mean, these, we should be part of the decision-making, not being excluded in any way. And I guess lastly, Mr. Mayor, since you're here, and I'm going to ask you a question because this is something that has been bothering me for a very long time. I know you were part of the pro-Brookhaven fight, and I know you worked withdrawing the lines for Brookhaven. I know there was the issue that you, one time you wanted Plaza Fiesta in the city, and they were very vocal in not wanting to be in the city. And you also went back and picked up the area down around, it's a corporate square, which included the Pink Pony, which, you know, the clubs had been incorporated, had been grandfathered in, paying $100,000 fee, and this was all grandfathered in. But they went into that with the, and I'm sure, and nobody gave them any other idea, nobody was forthcoming in saying, you come into the city, we'll go close you down. They went in under the assumption, and maybe that's a very bad word to use, that the grandfather clause with DeKalb County would be respected for what was already existing and what was already there. For a business that's been in existence as long as I've been in the legislature, and to suddenly find out that they're no longer going to be able to be in business, I just find it wasn't really forthcoming in how they were treated.
Well, actually, I don't, this may be the very first, and it'll be the last time I have ever spoken about the Pink Pony.
And I have not been there.
It will be, it will be the last.
I just want to say I've never been there.
No, I, I, look, I, I keep hearing this baloney that the Pink Pony was drawn into the city of Brookhaven for its revenue.
Yeah.
I was at the forefront of drawing those boundaries, and I can tell you that it's false, and here's why it's false. We had something that was enforced at the time the city of Brookhaven was created called the Voting Rights Act.
Right.
And you cannot draw minority communities on Beaufort Highway out of adjacent city boundaries and have that city be created.
Right.
Period.
Excuse me, I'm talking about that area.
No, 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 no. The reason the line was drawn at I-85 was to include the communities along Beaufort Highway within the boundaries because they should not be excluded, and legally, they could not be excluded. Now, decisions that are made after that time, that are decisions of the city council, are not anything I'm involved in. But in terms of how the boundaries were drawn, they were drawn to comply with the Voting Rights Act, plain and simple.
Excuse me.
I was there, that's how it happened.
Mike can speak much louder than I can, but I'm going to say one thing, that area where Pink Pony is and going a little further north is all commercial. It's not.
No, there's, there's thousands of apartment units.
But I'm not going to argue what was there.
All right, so let, let's let the mayor, let's let the mayor answer.
I'd say this, um, when you, you started off your comments, and I heard from Representative Oliver as well, about the haves and the have-nots, our police costs are much higher because we have Beaufort Highway. Our code enforcement costs are much higher because we have Beaufort Highway. City of Brookhaven has 67 apartment complexes, the vast majority of which are on Beaufort Highway. There are code issues, there are life safety issues, there are children's welfare issues that were being ignored previously to our incorporation.
Correct.
We have gone down into the communities on Beaufort Highway, Representative, Council of Gavilla aptly, ably represents that area. We've gone down into those areas where there's never been a government official before, where you didn't show up, where nobody else, no legislators, nobody's ever showed up to go to their schools and talk to them about, talk to them about what their needs are, gain trust with our police department. We have people who have never, ever approached or called or thought about calling a police, policeman on Beaufort Highway, who are now friends, Facebook friends, with our police department. Families who had, who had been, been abused by their landlords, people who have been victims of gang crime, who now have an outlet and have a safety valve to call because the city of Brookhaven exists. So when you say things like the have-nots, we're serving the have-nots proudly, and we, we welcome them, and we're going to let all boats rise. So incorporation is the best thing that's ever happened to Beaufort Highway. The city of Brookhaven is the best thing that's ever happened to Beaufort Highway. The Pink Pony, not one of us, and I'll put my hand on the Bible and swear to this, not one of us ever considered or thought that the Pink Pony would ever become an issue for our city, was the furthest things from our minds. We didn't run on it, we didn't know there was going to be an issue with it. The first week after we incorporated, we got messages from attorneys saying, you've got a problem here, because the DeKalb County has an agreement on an ordinance that, A, is unconstitutional and enforceable, and successive municipalities and jurisdictions cannot be bound by agreements of other governments. That was what we were faced with week one. We were ready to go to work on sidewalks and parks and police, and we're faced with the Pink Pony. It's not something any of us wanted or asked for. We have a duty to make sure that our ordinances are constitutional and enforceable. That's why we had to draft a new ordinance. We have the same ordinance by pretty much language, except for the, it's, ours is drafted much better, that DeKalb County does. DeKalb County bars the Pink Pony itself. You can't have alcohol and nudity under DeKalb County's ordinance.
There's the grandfather clause there.
That's what their ordinance says. That was DeKalb County's ordinance. We have a duty, when we become a city, to adopt DeKalb County ordinances, and when they're deficient, we have to improve upon them. We've done it, not just with the sexual ordinance, business ordinance, but with all the ordinances under DeKalb County. Our goal was never to shut down the Pink Pony. The Pink Pony is still operating, it's operating right now, if you want to go down there and see, it's still operating. Nobody shut the Pink Pony down, there's nobody putting a padlock on it. But we have a duty to protect our citizens, the, from the negative secondary effects of strip clubs, alcohol and nudity together, and we don't want Beaufort Highway to become a next Cheshire Bridge Road. We don't want five and six and seven strip clubs all over Brookhaven. That's why you have to have an ordinance. Now, that's not to the point of whether, what's going to happen individually with the Pink Pony, but if you allow one nude dancing establishment, which is free speech, nude dancing is free speech, if you say you are allowed to dance nude, you can't sell, tell the next dancer, they can't, the next club, they can't. So if you allow one, you have to allow 10. You can't pick winners and losers. So if you want us to have Beaufort Highway turn into strip club paradise, then don't act. We don't, we shouldn't have acted. That's the reasoning for it. Not because we're Bible thumpers, I believe, I'm a Christian, I do have morals, but it has nothing to do with my stance on the Pink Pony. The Pink Pony is an issue that none of us asked for, it's there, and it's a very, very complex constitutional issue, and we've struggled with it, we've labored hours on end about it. And it's not something we relish or enjoy. And they're a business, and I don't like to see people put out of work, and that's why we haven't shut them down, and that's why we, the Supreme Court ruled in our favor, 7-0 last Monday, that the litigation filed against us by the Pink Pony was meritless. So the Georgia Supreme Court, Democrats, Republicans, independents, among them, agreed that our ordinance was constitutional, and their lawsuit was, was without merit. So that's the issue with the Pink Pony.
I would not call them Republicans or Democrats because they're judges, and therefore they're nonpartisan.
Pointed by Republicans and Democrats.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for, for your service. I do want to make one correction, though. What, the delegation didn't come into, we were not trying to fight the formation of Dunwoody or, or Brookhaven, they're individual citizens.
You're, you're, stand corrected, correct. As members of the delegation.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll give that an amen.
You, we got one, we got one before you, right here, the young lady.
Well, I'm sorry that this has degraded into a sex and drugs type of conversation. It's the way politics is sometimes. I'm Jim Duffy, I'm running for State House District 81, and one of the things I wanted to tell the committee and, and the folks here is that at the Tucker candidate forum, I made a recommendation to the groups that were, had the disparate maps, the Lakeside and Tucker groups, to get their leadership together and form two-man teams, one on each side, and get a straw referendum from the disputed district. And whatever came out of that straw referendum by polling all of the people in that area would be what they ought to draw the maps around. But I haven't seen anything moving toward that, maybe they're doing it behind closed doors or something, but I'd like to help in that process if they would talk to me about it and see what we can do when the legislature gets in session next time.
All right. One thing along those lines, Representative Holcomb had a community meeting, which I've attended a couple, and he's had over the years, and he actually did an unofficial poll in that particular meeting, and it was very interesting, because it was in the heart of his district, the heart of the so-called contested area. And I will say conservatively, 80% of the people wanted to be in the city of Lakeside. And I found that very interesting. And I also have been given information where surveys were done, plotted on maps, where, again, in this disputed area, if you will, I would say 70 to 80% of the folks indicated they wanted to be in the Lakeside area. So, you know, I, I think, you know, there's really no scientific methodology on this stuff, but again, you sort of have to go with what people are telling you and what you see and what you, and make those determinations. So personally, I'm very happy that Briar Cliff and Lakeside have seemed to work out everything there. I'm hopeful that maybe Tucker will be able to make some amendments at that point in time. You know, I just don't know what's going to happen with the Tucker folks. And, but again, two of the three parties have sort of come together here, which was the intent of the House, and I will give my colleagues in the House credit for that. And hopefully, we can get all three worked out before the General Assembly convenes. But again, I think it's very, very important, and you heard what Mary Margaret Oliver said, she believes the entire county will be municipalized eventually. I don't know about that, but I do know this, we've got to make sure that the entire county gets services at an affordable rate, and I don't necessarily have the magic wand on that, and it's probably one of the major issues that we face in this task force, of which Mike and I are members. So we'll see how that all plays out. But again, at least from the information I've seen and what Representative Holcomb's meeting, that we got a pretty definitive opinion about the area we represent and what those people want. That's my intro for you.
Thank you, Senator Miller. Representative Holcomb, all of Michelle, I mean, Representative Henson Jacobs, mostly. I'm Mary Kay Woodworth with the City of Lakeside effort, and beside me is Alan Vannett with the City of Briar Cliff. Hopefully, this will be the last time we talk about cityhood tonight, I'm sure that other people have other topics and questions, and I have to leave because my daughter's going back to college tomorrow, and she's threatened to come and pull me out of here if I don't leave to take her out to dinner. Not to disclose a great deal of information, because we still have some work to do, the city of Briar Cliff, and like I said, we have been meeting for months and months, and particularly since the process was put in place by the House Governmental Affairs Committee. And we've had lots of really robust discussions, arguments, not much screaming, luckily. We've been very fortunate, we met with Bill Floyd about two weeks ago, had a terrific mediation session. And I think we've, I should say, I know that we have agreed to some borders. We are not going to talk about the specifics yet. We hope within the next two weeks to be meeting with the folks from Tucker. And Bill is going to be the mediator of that session. I do not anticipate that we will have only one session for that mediation. But I just want to let you know, that's where we are today. We've had meetings all over the community. Tomorrow night, we're having a meeting up in the Pleasant Ale area on public safety. Right now, we, our focus is really to get out there and talk about the topics, the issues, the real meat of the matter for what cityhood is about and the differences it can make. So I just want you to know, as a delegation, that we have worked very, very hard. As you said, I talked about the process, some people are happy, some are not. Our sincere wish and goal is that it will not go to a five-member House committee to, to draw the map. And just so, you know, we are very, very sincere about this.
You hope it won't?
No, no, absolutely not.
You and I are on the same.
We are absolutely on the same page, Representative Henson. I think with, with all of you, everyone we've talked to in the legislature and the House and Senate feels the same way. So we appreciate all you're doing. If you have any other questions about what are, what we're doing, I wish there was someone here from Tucker, because I just don't know where they are today.
I think they have, there's a meeting in Tucker.
Oh, that's right, that's where, you were just there, Representative Holcomb.
Thank you for all you do.
You're welcome.
One question, well, first, thank you for your hard work and continued efforts. Secondly, is with respect to, and I think all of us agree, regardless of whether you all can meet the deadline on November 15th, which we hope that you do, the only path forward is really for the Lakeside and Briar Cliff effort to be a unified one. So with that, when do you anticipate being able to share perhaps a rough draft of what you've agreed to? Do you think that could occur before the mediation, or?
I, I would prefer it not be before the mediation. We don't want to play all of our cards. And I, you know, I don't want us in any way to be accused of, of not being transparent, but it's, we just feel it's in our best interest, because we have some, not only on the northern side and eastern of, we have some on the south border, too, that we're working at. Obviously, the Executive Park Choah announcement last week, you know, it's a, it's a ripple. You know, we'll, we'll wait and see what happens with that. On the southern western side, some of the annexation issues are, come into play, Emery Druid Hills, neighborhoods in there that have options, some goods, some bads, some, you know, some that they wish they had, such as Decatur. So we're still talking to those communities. We're working with many of them to help them do their own polling and petitioning, I shouldn't say working with them, just, you know, guiding them a little bit so they can self-determine where they want to be, and that the opportunity, if they are not in a cityhood map this go-around, that there is potential for them, you know, down the road, whether it's a year from now, two years from now. I know that they're greatly concerned citizens in those areas, and I think it was Representative Oliver said, uncertainty is the worst thing for business, but also for the citizens. It's really interesting how in the last year, the level of knowledge and information that the citizens of the county have is really ramped up for many reasons, and it's not cityhood that is driving. I think it's the concern with, with the county, the CEO, you know, the taxpayer dollars being not used efficiently, so I think it's all converging at once. But I'm, I, we hope, we, we absolutely hope by the end of October, beginning of November, we can have those maps, but until we meet with Tucker, it would not be in anybody's best interest to do that.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Enjoy your evening with your daughter.
No. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rosalynn Myers. I am not running for political office, I'm not on any Lakeside or Briar Cliff committee. I am an ordinary citizen, I don't have a child who's leaving for college, but I would like my chance to speak. Philosophically, I am very against this idea of cityhood in DeKalb County, because I agree with some of you that creates a situation of have and have-nots. I live in the Briar Cliff-Lakeside area, and I'm just waiting with bated breath to see where some committee is going to say, I belong. Which one of these communities I should be incorporated into? I believe that regionalization is the way to equalize the haves and the have-nots, and that's what unincorporated DeKalb has been for a very long time. Notwithstanding the red hurrying of the Pink Pony, what I've heard mostly from people who want to be individual cities or annex parts of the city is, we want the good stuff that's going to generate a lot of tax dollars, and oh, gosh, if we have to take the people who don't and who require our services, we'll do that. I really do not think it's good for the county to have all this incorporation of separate little towns who, in a world of globalization, are all looking in on themselves, trying to gather in for themselves, the most revenue and the most affluent communities that they can. can so they can get their premium services and really not care what is happening to the rest of the county and the region. It goes way beyond just our county. It goes to the whole greater Atlanta area and how we see ourselves as a regional community. And if Atlanta and its areas want to really be great, it has to look beyond all these little communities who just want to do their own thing, have their own police, have their own government, and add layers and layers of bureaucracy that we don't need. And I think what has happened is because of an unfortunate type of government in DeKalb with the CEO with too much power, it's created this environment where everyone is cityhood happy. And unfortunately, we probably will be a whole bunch of municipalities in ten years, and I don't think that that's going to be good for DeKalb County. On the other hand, what I heard from you all early in this meeting is it's almost a defensive measure for people like the Lakeside and Briar Cliff community to become cities because you said all the economic development is occurring in Brookhaven and Dunwoody. So those of us who are not in those communities have to look around and say, what do we do to defend ourselves? So we're on the horns of a dilemma. Overall, what I'm saying is I think we're not in a good place. And I would really like to hear from all of you philosophically, without regard to your particular districts, how you feel about this whole business of cityhood in DeKalb County. And thank you for your time.
Senator.
Well, I think the cityhood movement basically started in North Fulton, and it arose because people didn't think they were getting the services they were entitled for, the money they paid for it. And I think one of the problems that people have to understand between your schools, the county, and your cities, I believe in Dunwoody, about thirteen percent of my tax bill goes to the city of Dunwoody. The other eighty-seven percent goes to DeKalb County and DeKalb County schools. So we're still part of the county. I also can tell you that cityhood is not perfect. Believe me, because I still get phone calls about, why are we doing this? Why are we doing that? And I tell them, you need to talk to your city council member. If you don't like that one, call it the one in Brookhaven. No, but, but again, if I took a survey where I live today, after five years where taxes haven't gone up, roads are being paved, parks are being worked on, code enforcement's happening, they can find elected officials they can talk to, I would venture to say in Dunwoody, the satisfaction level from cityhood is probably about eighty percent. And I think if I took some of the more established cities over the years, like Decatur, they probably, between Decatur and Roswell, they've probably done the best job of economic development I've seen in the last decade between those two areas. Between Canton Street and Roswell and what Decatur's done when Bill Floyd was mayor and the city council and those people down there, again, municipalized. We're not creating another layer of bureaucracy. We're replacing things. And I think, and people feel like they're getting value for the monies that they pay. I'm not asking you to agree with me. That's been the philosophy of it. And it's a fact that the large portion of our economic development has been in cities. Doraville, okay? I worked with Doraville. DeKalb County worked with Doraville. The Chamber of Commerce worked with Doraville. We all worked together on this GM situation. So we don't walk away from DeKalb County. You know, where I live, I work in Buckhead, at least till the end of the year. And three Wednesday nights a month, I drive to Decatur, which takes me at least an hour to deal with DeKalb County government, to try to reform it and make it better. So I'm not leaving DeKalb County. Do I think the county's too big? Do I think the county's inefficient? Do I think it possibly is bloated? The answer is yes, yes, and yes. And if we can get the county to the role it ought to be playing, i.e. libraries, i.e. court system, i.e. this type of thing, maybe we can get a handle on our costs. Because if you start looking at the cost for DeKalb County versus our neighboring cities, counties, they're absurd. So, you know, we are in this situation, and yet we've got to try to take care of everybody in the county. I've said that before, particularly in the less developed areas. And that's a challenge. This task force is working on it. So again, I'm not asking you to embrace cityhood. People have a right to vote for their elected officials. Yes, Dunwoody was whatever the number was, eighty-five percent. Brookhaven was fifty-four percent. Peachtree Corners was probably sixty percent, whatever. But the people I know in cities today, I don't know, it's probably eighty percent satisfaction. So there's something there. And again, I'm not asking you to embrace it. It's not for everybody. But again, I think you've got to respect people's rights. If that's what they want, then I think they're entitled to get it.
Well, I mean, I don't know that I have much to add to that other than, I mean, look, first of all, we're not, I mean, nobody's leaving the county. I would concur with Fran. I mean, I go to the same task force meetings Fran does, and it's all about fixing the county. I go to all three of these delegation meetings because I want to hear from folks all across the county. Ultimately, if cities are to be formed in DeKalb County, we're going to have to make sure that we can provide services to everybody all across the county at an affordable rate, period, end of story. And that's how I feel about the core issue of providing services and making sure that we, whatever we do in DeKalb County, we do in an equitable way all across the county. But the reality is, first of all, Dunwoody's boundaries and Brookhaven's boundaries were not drawn by cherry picking. They were drawn to, you know, to, they were drawn logically. I mean, Dunwoody's southern boundary is 285. I don't know that it gets any more logical than that. Brookhaven's boundaries can be described in, you know, a sentence or less. It's just the Fulton County line, I-85, Claremont Road, the Chambly City Limits, and Dunwoody. But the bottom line is this, folks, and I don't think this is unique to Dunwoody or Brookhaven, folks all across the county want to be heard. We have county commission districts that are a hundred and forty thousand people. A hundred and forty thousand. That's how Elaine Boyer happens. A hundred and forty thousand people. It's, it's, I mean, it's the height of unaccountability. You don't have, in order to run and win one of those campaigns, you just dump a bunch of mail in people's mailboxes. You don't really have to talk one-on-one with people. But each of these city council members in Brookhaven represents twelve thousand people. Let me give you another example. The redevelopment powers referendum in Brookhaven. City council passes a resolution, asks us to put it on the ballot. So the General Assembly did that. Seemed like a fairly simple proposition. The, you know, every other city, new city around us has had that referendum. Dunwoody had it. Sandy Springs had it. Brookhaven's going through their referendum process right now. And there turns out to be a fairly robust debate about the issue. It might pass. It might fail. The citizens are going to have their say. And it's fifty thousand citizens making that decision for their community. And whatever that decision is should be respected. And those city council members, I mean, in every, I'm not wishing this on any particular city council member, so please don't take that the wrong way because we have the entire Brookhaven City Council here in the room. But the reality is that every one of the new cities that has been created has had city council members kicked off the city council at some point during their existence, every last one of them. Now tell me when the last time was that that happened in DeKalb County short of a federal indictment?
Or the legislature. Or the legislature.
I'm just, I'm just saying that it's truly local representation. It's accountable. It's closer to home. People like the fact that, I mean, we have a city council campaign going on right now in two neighborhoods, two neighborhoods. That's an entire Brookhaven City Council district, Ashford Park and Drew Valley, two neighborhoods, being crisscrossed by at least two candidates who are going door-to-door incessantly, knocking on doors, getting to know their neighbors. That's the way it should be done. And that's why folks generally are flocking to the cityhood model. It's a good model, but we have to make the delivery of services work all across the county. And that's the issue that really is the big issue to be addressed going forward.
Thank you, Representative. I hate to know if you had a lot to add next time.
You know, I guess the discussion is about providing services, but I think the other thing you could also look at is it about assuring that citizens can afford the services that they need and deserve. Because money can always cure everything, and we would not be concerned about the incorporation of cities up north or loss of income to the county. If we just had all the money that we possibly need, we could easily enough provide the services for the rest of unincorporated DeKalb. But that's a Camelot, and we don't live there. We live in DeKalb County. So we have a lot of issues to deal with. And hopefully, the task force is working on a lot of them that Fran and Mike are attending on a weekly basis. And I know that we have folks here that are with the, Beth, tell me.
Blueprint. Say blueprint.
Blueprint. Task force. And I know they're going to be bringing that to some of the different organizations throughout the county and helping to educate people. So we do have citizen involvement, and I think that's incredibly important. And working together, trying to find a way to make our county a better place.
Very quickly, I appreciate your comments very much. To begin with, in a perfect world, we wouldn't need to have this discussion because we wouldn't have all the issues that we're having with the county. But they're real. They can't be denied. They can't be swept under the rug, and we have to deal with them. And the second scenario for a perfect world would be for us to have this conversation at very macro level and have, if we are going to have massive municipalization, let's do it instead of a domino effect, but let's do it in a much broader conversation and make sure that all the communities, we know how they're going to be impacted and have that conversation together. Many of us have advocated for that to take place, but it hasn't taken place. So instead, what we have is what we have, which is a messy process, but one that I think it is important to allow the people to have their voices heard, to echo what others have said. In the district that I represent, it's very, very clear that people want to have a referendum. And I am supportive of the referendum coming forward. And then I think through that, we should have a very substantial and substantive conversation about what it means. And then if people want to incorporate, they'll vote yes, and if they don't, then they'll vote no. But I think that it makes sense to have that process. I would be very much in favor of reforming the county government and particularly getting rid of the CEO figure. I agree with your point about there being too much power in this individual. And it's not per se a commentary on the former CEO's troubles, but just the fact that he could, could even make those phone calls is a little bit troubling. And so I think that, I'm hopeful that that conversation can continue. And I was candidly a little bit disappointed that the task force did, or gave that up as a potential recommendation because they didn't think politically it would be viable. I would rather we get the best policy recommendations, and then if we fail to, as legislators move them forward, then we're accountable for that. But it shouldn't have been taken off the table just because it's not politically viable. So we have a lot of work to do, but what we have in terms of where things are, I think, is the best that it's going to get. And like everybody here, I worry about the groups that are outside of the borders and the maps. It's, it's real, the drawing of borders. And that's why during my first term, I voted against the incorporation of Brookhaven because I didn't represent it at that time, I do now, because my district or the district I represented didn't want it because they were very concerned about being left out and what that was going to do. But as more annexations and incorporations take place, you're going to have, I think, changes of heart within the community, and more people are going to want it than not. And that's certainly what I'm receiving is feedback from the people who live in the eighty-first district.
Great. And the only thing I would add is that I do agree with you on regionalism, that we do need to be talking about how do we make this region great. I think DeKalb County is an important asset for the metro Atlanta region. The more it's destabilized, the more destabilized the region, Atlanta. I think all of Atlanta should be concerned about what's going on in DeKalb County right now and making sure that it is a well-functioning county. I do believe that we are a great, we have a great asset where we sit now. And I think that probably we can right this ship fairly quickly. But it's going to take some, a lot of heart and great minds coming together to make, make DeKalb County not only what it was, but what we know it can be for the 21st century.
The one thing, when you talk about regionalism, I'm going to give you some hope. Mike Jacobs heads the MARTOC committee, the MARTA committee, and I'm on that committee as well. I think from the standpoint of where we're going for transportation, we are going in that direction. It may be called Go ATL someday, if you have Cobb, Gwinnett, okay, Greta, okay, MARTA all together, so that you can actually have one cohesive transportation system. I see that that happening in the long run. We're making some progress in that area. I'll give Mike some plaudits from that standpoint. He's been the driving force along with Mr. Parker. Mr. Parker of MARTA is a breath of fresh air, folks. We've been very blessed with him, what he's doing. You know, we've now got cameras on all the buses. There are going to be cameras on all the trains because security is a big issue for folks. This redevelopment, if you will, the Live, Work, and Play Initiative around the MARTA stations. We're talking about expanding MARTA. If we go up 400, you know, they've got to present several options, whether it's heavy rail, whether it's bus rapid transit, which is probably the more practical because it's about twenty percent of the cost. But this gentleman, and Mike's worked a lot with him more than I have, you should be very pleased, at least from a regional standpoint there, we're making progress. Because we will not be a great city, will not be a great region without a great transportation system, of which we do not have. So there is some hope for regionalism. We're not, we're not that myopic, just so you know, that there are areas that, yes, we do believe that's very important. So I want to let you know that.
And actually, I'd like to use that as a jumping off point to MARTA, which, you know, for those of you who don't know, I chair the MARTA Oversight Committee in the General Assembly, which is the joint House and Senate committee that's charged with overseeing MARTA's management and budget and fiscal affairs. I cannot understate, just to kind of jump off from where, from Fran's remarks, cannot understate what an asset to metro Atlanta Keith Parker is as the general manager of MARTA. This is really a sea change, frankly, from the, from the relationship that MARTA, the transit system and its Oversight Committee have had in terms of a relationship and how we interact and work together. The reality is that, you know, before Keith Parker came in, MARTA was hemorrhaging red ink, was in a very difficult situation. And frankly, I don't think had the management in place to grasp how, how to get that situation under control and ultimately, how to start moving the ball forward after getting that situation under control. I mean, the reality is that in order for MARTA to, you know, in order for us to kind of work on expanding transit and making it, you know, bigger and better, MARTA's fiscal house first needs to be in order. That's just a reality. Keith Parker has come in, taken the KPMG recommendations that were sitting on his desk when he came in. He has began, those are a series of privatization recommendations that say, you know, there are certain things that MARTA does not need to be doing on its own. It can actually outsource them at a cost savings. And MARTA, you know, those recommendations are set out on a five-year roadmap, so we know exactly where MARTA should be and when. And they're right on schedule implementing those recommendations. And all of that means that we are actually now having very serious conversations about how the state becomes a partner with MARTA going forward. It's a, it is a conversation very unlike anything I have ever experienced with MARTA in my ten years in the General Assembly, and I am very encouraged by what it means for the future. But make no mistake about it, it all starts with Keith Parker as general manager. I'm just, I cannot begin to say what a breath of fresh air he is at I'm just, I cannot begin to say what a breath of fresh air he is at MARTA.
Excellent. Representative Kendrick, you want to add anything to this?
Lady over there.
Well, I want to make sure. Okay.
A lady over there wants to speak.
Oh, good evening. Thank you for all being here. My name is Martha Pacini. I am not an elected official. I have no desire to ever be an elected official. Godspeed to all of you. But I do have been going through a masochistic tendency of late. And I am on the...
The mic's on.
Is it on? Okay. I am going through a masochistic tendency. I am on the task force. I am on the Blueprints Committee, and I've been basically focused on the topic of internal audit. I am not an internal auditor either. I am an English major. I made that clear to everyone. But I have made it my business to go to school on that topic. And I believe strongly that there is some action that needs to be taken by the General Assembly to mandate the type of internal audit function that would be required to right the ship in DeKalb County. We will never divorce the county. It's still here. It's 85% of your tax bill. It's 85% of all of our tax bill. And we need those kinds of regulations and audit functions in place to try to right the ship. And a grand gesture is required. I know the County Commission is doing a few little things, but that's just not enough at this point. It might have been enough three years ago. It's not enough now. It needs to be big. So I encourage all of you to please look at what we can do to mandate an independent, sustainable, robust, comprehensive, professional internal audit capacity.
If we do nothing else with regard to the county, to the county government, and actually, we need to do a lot of things with regard to the county government.
That's a big one, though.
But if we do nothing else, auditing and fixing the Ethics Board are the two things we absolutely need to do.
Thank you.
And speaking as the only licensed CPA sitting up here, I do understand the internal audit function and that, one of the things that I asked CEO Burl Ellis to do and Lee May to do was get to the delegation as quickly as possible, their recommendations for how they want the organizational act to be dealt with. We didn't want to do it from a heavy-handed standpoint, but it looks like it's something that we probably would have to take on ourselves.
You're going to get a recommendation for the task force?
I can send you my recommendation.
Well, he's going to, to be fair, he's going to get a task force recommendation on that and the Ethics Board.
Well, and I'll say, I mean, the blueprint recommendations are getting a very heavy look from the Operations Task Force.
Right.
Okay. And thank you for that. I appreciate that. Pat Killingsworth, also not running for office. I, doing the ethics work with the Blueprint Committee and having been on the Board of Ethics, having spent a lot of time on it lately, I'd like to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for being willing to take this on this year. It's a long time coming. I'd also like to ask you to include us in the discussions that you're having because we really have done a lot of background work. And whether you decide to take up our recommendations or not, we'd like to be included in the discussions to explain what we've done, why we've done it, be there to answer questions, whatever you'd like for us to do. But we put a lot of, I don't know, I know you've seen copies of it. And we would appreciate being able to be at least part of that. So thank you again for the statement you just made. Bless you. Thank all of you very much for being willing to work with us.
Now, before you leave, I would suggest since you've got the head of the House delegation, that before we implement anything, any of these changes, that he's going to probably have hearings.
Right.
And that you all will certainly be invited to those hearings.
Thank you.
He'll even invite a senator or two. I mean, you never know.
Well, you know, actually...
Yeah, even if I'm not invited, I would show up, so it doesn't really matter.
I've got a big dining room table, and I'm happy to have everybody over to just sit down and talk. I would love that.
But you will be invited, I'm sure Howard...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Pat?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to say thank you. I know how hard you've worked on that, and I know the expertise that you bring to that issue. And I think we'd be very remiss if we did not include you and include the knowledge that's been gained, both by the different folks such as Martha, you, the folks that have served on the Organizational Task Force, and the folks that have served in the Blueprint Committee. I mean, we really would be. Why reinvent the wheel and why have to do all the research when you've done it all and can bring your knowledge to us? I just have to feel strongly about that. I want to say thank you for what you did.
Appreciate that. And we would like, I would, I mean, seriously, I have a big dining room table. I mean, I would love to have you all come over and just sit and talk. I'm not kidding. I just think that that would be a great way to do it. You'll get invitations, and I hope you'll be able to make it. But really, I would like to be able to have that opportunity. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment before people leave?
Yeah, I'll get depressing.
I want to make a comment before anybody starts to leave here. Probably the most important piece of legislation we have to pass going forward, it was passed by the House last year, was to consider the, continue the property tax freeze that I originally passed about 10 years ago. It was a five-year sunset clause, and it comes up this upcoming year. If we don't pass that legislation, and the House, to their credit, passed it last year, and it came to the Senate, it did not pass, you will get 10 years of assessment increases, folks. And none of us will be invited back in the next election if that's what happens. So what I'm going to tell you, and Joe, make sure you get this as well, that is one of the first things out of the box that the House needs to pass again and send to the Senate with no sunset clause in it. Just do it. All of the cities have it, the new cities, so that you don't have to worry about it. If your value goes up, your taxes don't go up. They're going to have to raise the millage rate. If your value goes down, it goes down. It's that simple. But this will be a disaster for this county if we don't pass this legislation. The House did their job last year. The Senate did not. So I want to emphasize to you, the first bill I want to see coming out of the House is this particular bill, and they were kind enough to do it last year. And hopefully, my colleagues will get their act together on it this year. Thank you, Howard.
You're welcome, sir.
Hello, folks. Normally, I just get to write things about what you guys say, and I don't usually get to ask the questions. So I do have one question for Senator Miller and Representative Jacobs. As part of being on the DeKalb Operations Task Force, are you guys still handling the issue of host?
Yes.
Okay. With host being such an important piece of the revenue stream for the new cities, what things are you talking about with host? And will it affect any of the percentages that are coming to the cities now? Because it's an 80-20 split. What conversations are you having about it? And I'll go back over there and let you guys answer.
Sure. Well, I, you know, I don't know that the... Did everyone hear the question?
Explain the question.
No. Okay. The question is, in essence, what the conversations over host are over at the Operations Task Force. I mean, that's the gist of the question.
Just tell Mike what it does.
Yeah. Host right now, let me give everyone a quick education on this. Host right now is the penny we pay for property tax reduction in DeKalb County. Eighty, it is split into 80% and 20%. Host itself generates about $100 million in annual revenue, okay? The 80% basically goes straight back into your property tax bill to reduce the amount that you pay on, in property, in county government property taxes. And if you look, there's a column on your property tax bill that says host credit, and that's what that is. The remaining 20% is used for infrastructure. And the way that it is divvied up now is according to a formula that was put in place a few years back. Now, the intent of the formula is that cities don't receive the host credit on the city line item of their property tax bill that is the equivalent of the County Special Services Tax District. So the intent of this formula is to credit the cities for that amount that they don't get, plus their infrastructure funding. The problem with that is that the more cities that are created, the smaller the pool of remaining infrastructure funding for the county is. And now it's down to about 1.5 million out of the 20 million that would exist. Dunwoody gets about 5 million of that. Brookhaven gets about 5 million of that. Right now, the, and this is, I mean, there's a lot of back and forth over this very issue on the task force. There is some conversation about going to 100% host. There may be another splosh included in that. And if that were to occur, then, you know, everybody would share in some kind of equal way that probably would make the county, I'm sorry, probably make the cities whole and then some. So the cities would actually get a bigger slice of that than they're currently getting. But the county, obviously, would get a much bigger slice of that because all they're getting is 1.5 million now. So that's not an endorsement of the proposal, and I want to be clear about that because right now, these conversations are at a very early preliminary stage. But the general idea is that, you know, I recognize this, okay? That right now, we have a formula imposed on host that, while I understand the logic behind it as a resident of a city, I also understand why citizens in unincorporated areas look at it and say that's unfair. And so that's the issue we need to fix. I mean, ultimately, the cities need infrastructure funding, but the county needs infrastructure funding. And, you know, how we work all of that out. Now, if we go to 100% host, of course, that means everybody's host credit on their property tax bills is going up. And especially, that's especially true if we apply that across the city and county line items. Now, again, very early stage of the discussions, I don't know where this is going to end up. And I also am not, you know, endorsing any particular approach. But it's definitely an issue that we're looking at, and it's being looked at with an eye toward not shortchanging anybody.
The only thing I would add is, it's going to be very difficult to change that formula until the citizens of this county believe that their government is credible. To try to talk about another splosh, which means another penny of tax, I don't think there's anybody in this room who's going to raise their hand for that based upon the credibility of the DeKalb County government. So it'll be very difficult, I think. Probably one of the more difficult things to do anything about going forward until DeKalb County with its citizenry gets some kind of credibility, which we do not have with our citizens right now.
And I'll say, I mean, I agree with that sentiment. And that's, I mean, it's just a difficult issue all the way around. But again, I mean, I, when you get right down to, you know, what the formula is on that 20%, I mean, again, there's a logic behind it. I understand the logic behind it. But the flip side of it is that, you know, citizens in the unincorporated areas don't believe it's fair, and I understand why they don't believe it's fair.
But also, what also isn't fair, our problem with infrastructure in DeKalb County, we pay for, we pay for Grady, and we pay for MARTA. And so does Fulton. But Gwinnett doesn't, Cobb doesn't, and they've got all this money for transportation because we're paying for Grady by ourselves. And we're, where Howard works now, and we're paying for MARTA by ourselves with Fulton. And that's why we don't have the transportation dollars that these surrounding counties do. And I think a lot of us aren't real happy with that either.
Yeah. And the one thing I can promise you, sorry, I don't, there's been a lot of discussion about this issue. I don't need to keep going back and forth, Mr. Chairman. But the one thing I'll add to all of that is that on host, you know, some task force members are looking at it and saying, well, you know, we're just subsidizing homesteaded property owners, and we ought to just repeal it. Not gonna happen. Realize what that means. If it is repealed, that host credit, which amounts to 100, sometimes, you know, 1,000 plus on your property tax bill, just goes away, and your property tax bill goes up by that amount. Not going to happen. Not going to happen.
Probably stuff would be cheaper to buy.
You're bad.
Hi. My name is Mary Shellman. I'm not from this area. I live in Medlock area, which is one of the areas that Mary Kay referenced as being an area that's up in the air. And I just wanted to, I wasn't planning to speak, but I wanted to just put it in your ear that I think the annexation that City of Decatur is proposing is really unfair to my neighborhood. They're coming in and just cherry picking the commercial areas, you know, the Emery Point on all four corners, and then they're taking Suburban Plaza and want to go all the way down to Patel Plaza, which is the Medline District. I was a principal participant in the Medline Study, which was an Atlanta regional study that we just finished after six months of meetings. A lot of people in my neighborhood were part of that and the surrounding area. Now, Decatur wants to come in and just take the entire Medline District without annexing any of the residential. And we're about 1,300 houses, single-family houses in that neighborhood. So we'll be, they're taking all the commercial along one end, and then North Decatur Road, and then up Claremont. So we'll be surrounded by commercial city of Decatur and, you know, with no benefits and no, I mean, we have, we're looking at other options. We're, you know, trying to, I'm also trying to hold on to my high school. It's Druid Hills High School. I moved there for Druid Hills. And now I hear, you know, if Druid Hills neighborhood goes with City of Atlanta, they'll take the high school with them. Or if they go with City of Decatur, they'll take the high school with them. And then I'll be without the asset of the high school, which I think is clearly an asset for my home. So I really wish you would, you talk about the equitable distribution of commercial properties, and I know I've been coming to the task force meetings. I know that the Georgia Tech model is supposed to be coming out. But I just don't see how that is going to be there. Your decisions are going to be made in time to influence these annexations and make it so that every area in the central and north and south DeKalb, you know, has a viable district around it, you know.
Mary Margaret, you're representative?
She is not. She used to be, but now she's City of Decatur.
Who's your representative?
Male, right male.
I hear a lot about Decatur and its annexations.
Uh-huh.
Proposals. And I hear they can't afford to take more residential because of the children and the fact of the schools being filled to capacity.
Right.
That that is the problem. I mean, having their own school system and schools being filled to capacity.
Yes.
Could you, since you seem to be quite involved with this, could you just address that statement? Because...
That's what, I'm not part of the Manna hierarchy, but they've met with City of Decatur, and City of Decatur has told them that they are not interested in Manna at this time because of the schools, because they don't want, they don't want more children. And of course, we're a neighborhood of single-family houses, and they don't want to take those houses and put the burden on their school.
How many houses?
It's about 1,300. And there's another, CHCA is Claremont Heights, which is just adjacent to us, is the other neighborhood that has also asked for annexation. And now they're sort of doing an individual petition, but they've been told the same thing we were.
Thank you. Okay.
Let me make sure I understand.
Yeah, I do.
The only way this particular annexation would occur in any form is legislatively, right?
Right.
It couldn't be done unless you, I mean, it's not, the commercial property owners aren't...
Asking for that.
Aren't asking for it, right?
No, they are not asking for it.
I mean, in that case, I mean, I think it's really just a matter for the legislators who represent that area. I mean, obviously, we would all listen to them as DeKalb County legislators.
Right, right. And I don't know where Mary Margaret Oliver is on it. I was, like I said, I wasn't planning to speak, but then I thought I might just take the opportunity.
But based on her comments, I think she'd be with you.
Well, based on her comments about equitable distribution, I would...
Making sure Mr. Earl writes that down.
Right. But I just, I just don't know, you know? And City of Decatur has their map out.
The, with, I mean, I really want to kind of drive this point home with regard to any annexation.
Uh-huh.
I mean, whether it's Lythonia or Stone Mountain or Decatur, you really need to be in close communication with the legislators who represent that particular territory.
Right. And I think that the Manna Board is trying to do that now. But I just, as a resident of Medlock, I've been, I'm a part of Good Growth DeKalb, too, so I've sort of been on top watching things, but...
I was under the impression that C-Lig Enterprises was not in favor of either Suburban Plaza or, don't they also have the Plaza?
Or the other one. No, they're not in favor, but they don't get a vote, commercial property owners don't get a vote in annexation.
So how...
It's really just what y'all do. It's my understanding for commercial. If there's not a residential component to it, then there's no vote.
All right.
Is that correct? Is that correct?
If the commercial property owner is...
Agrees?
Yeah. Or agrees.
Two opposed to it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
And I know we're running out of time here, but, and y'all coming together?
Yeah, we are. And we recognize it's getting late. We'll be quick. This is Robert Glover and I'm Dan Wright. We're on the Blueprints Committee also, the advocacy group. And I want to tell you, first of all, that I'm chief engineer at Marta.
Thank you, Robert.
And I really appreciate your recognition of what the authority's doing under Keith's leadership. We're all working hard to try to make things better and make all of our internal processes more efficient. That's my primary responsibility. After making sure that all the projects that are underway now are safe and efficient and go well, I'm developing policy for the authority for all infrastructure development in the future so that we do things in a consistent way. And it's from that perspective that I want to, we would be remiss if we didn't talk to you about the third leg of the Blueprints Initiative. And that is, if we have the ethics and the audit in place, you know, we can catch and punish people that do things. But what's missing, the third leg, is are the policies to make sure that the county staff are doing things correctly to begin with. And so, without going into all the details, we have some flyers in the back. We'd like everyone to pick up and look at what we have on the web, all the details. But in general, we would like your help to try to change the Organizational Act in order to restore checks and balances so that the CEO isn't determining what all the procurement policy is.
Only thing I have to add is also in changing that ORC Act, you also must look at the fact that corruption can exist in procurement. American Bar Association's put out papers on it. We have contract splitting here in DeKalb County.
We know that.
So that with your help, hopefully, we can get the ORC Act changed so that there are checks and balances between the CEO and the commissioners. Any questions or comments on what we've said?
We agree with you. At least I do.
Oh, you agree? So that means you're going to put that on the docket?
It means that we're going to put, well, we're going to listen to what the recommendations come back from the task force and look at how we can tweak the Organizational Act to make the county work more efficient, to approach 21st century operation.
He's going to tweak it. Some of us are going to take a sledgehammer, but go ahead.
No, the thing I'm going to say is, so that when I go out on the state web, the state's website, and look at prefiled bills, I can see that you filed a bill, prefiled a bill to take care of this.
We wouldn't prefile the bill without looking at the work first.
I see. Okay.
And, you know, first of all, I hope you'll keep this up both with the Operations Task Force and at these meetings. I mean, there's two more of these. And I will pledge to this, once the election is over, because it's a very busy period for all of us, whether or not we have opposition in November, between then and the legislative session, I will bring the Blueprint Group up here to Brookhaven and have a community meeting and use my email list to blast it out and all of that. And I'll be more than happy to host everybody, okay?
There we go.
Before I forget, the recommendations from the task force, we're supposed to be completing our work by 12:01, just so everybody knows. And so, we should, whatever's going to be done, will be done by the first of December. And then, as you know, we go into session.
Well, we intend to give you semifinal drafts where we've gotten to at this point in the next week or so.
No, I understand.
And just bear in mind, we're laypeople, so any help that we can get drafting legislation and crafting it in a way that, where it is feasible, we would appreciate any help we could get.
I'll have you talk to my lawyer over here.
Well, I mean, we have a strategy and we're going to develop a legislative strategy and start writing legislation. But, you know, this is not what we do.
That's the problem right there.
Plus, the changes that we are recommending was also part of the special grand jury report that came out on January 18, 2013.
Thank you for coming and letting us speak.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. This is the IT guy right here.
He's our last guy?
This is the last guy.
Company got acquired.
You're the last one.
Uh, Jeff? Yeah. I'll make this extraordinarily quick. Keith Hanks, I live over in the Barcliff Lakeside proposed area. Can't thank everyone enough for the effort they've been putting into all of this as of lately. Challenges that I have, and I really think it's an opportunity for the county. I moved here in 2007 from Massachusetts. I know, another New England alumni. There's a lot of greatness throughout Atlanta, this region, DeKalb in particular. The challenge and one of the things that I've been drawn to so much on the cityhood side is having a sense of identity, a sense to live in somewhere that I knew. And when I moved here, Brookhaven didn't exist. And I knew back then it was going to be someplace special in the future. Now, after losing several houses that I tried to acquire in Brookhaven, that would have been a great purchase, we settled over in the area that we are now. It's a fantastic area. We've got some of the same challenges that's being discussed here tonight. And I bring this up because you're going to hear the same theme as you go to the other county meetings. When I go towards, I live sort of sandwiched between La Vista and Lawrenceville Highway. When I go to Lawrenceville Highway, I've got the $99 three-night special motels. You know, I've got all the issues that we're hearing in some parts of the county. That's future redevelopment. And the one thing I would say is, anything that this group can focus on, I know some of it's operational task force base, but through legislatively as well, anything that'd be focused on to help build up the identity of DeKalb, there's a lot of millennials living here. And the reason why I think so many of these areas in DeKalb are not flourishing is because all the folks moving here, they don't know where they are. So it's something that, you know, I mentioned to Jason Larry, you know, when he had gone through the Stonecrest presentation, it's chicken before the egg. You can't bring people into your area to create a city if there's no business. And there's no business without a city. And that's the challenge. I don't know how to legislatively open that up. I do know that these groups have had a hard time getting studies, getting resources, anything that can be kind of academically opened up to help them with this. Because I think areas such as Stonecrest and some of these other areas throughout DeKalb, I think they're getting passed on for Conyers and Covington and areas like that because they have a brand and they have an identity. And we've got a lot of resources in DeKalb in the 285 strip and the I-20 strip that have a lot of potential. Don't really need to open for comics. I know he wants to get in. But I just, I thank you so much for the work that you've been doing.
Thank you.
First of all, Representative Stevens sends her regrets her answers in the hospital, so she was unable to attend. A year ago, I came before yet for Stanford on the issue of the tire law. And, you know, it was, you were not there. My mother's friend, who has some property along Pennsyl Highway, her children came home early one day and caught a person dumping 200 to 400 somewhat tires on their property. Apparently, he was, you know, licensed to dispose of it, but instead of...
Is this the one we've heard about?
No, this is, so they called the police. They got the tag number. They got everything. And, you know, the legislative said that, you know, she will get in touch with us. She's lied, I meant completely. In that year, I've talked to Commissioner Gannon at the cityhood meeting at the legislature's office, gave her the information. They emailed her, nothing. I called the CEO at the State of DeKalb this year at Forest Stanford, gave him, he said he gave his legislative, you know, his aide's email address and number. They did the same thing, nothing. I called Betty Davis at One DeKalb, gave her the information. She said she would email the chief of police the next day. That was in February. More or less, they got...
It's road enforcement.
Well, the issue is, is that he dumped the tires, but DeKalb County seems to like to find the property owner for the tires and also for the pay to clean them up.
Have tires been dumped?
Yeah.
Any more tires dumped since then?
No, but just down the road from Pinola Road, from the library, as you saw on Channel Two, an elderly lady in her 80s in a wheelchair had about 4,000 tires dumped on her. Thank. And what does the county do? They cite her. And then the family has to pay thousands of dollars to try to clean it up. And then, you know, they can't. So the county issues for her to appear in court. And she don't get the thing. And then she has a bench warrant out for her.
It is.
I meant, luckily, Channel Two, you know, had a story and she did not get arrested and somebody came. But, I mean, we've had continuing incidents in the City of Atlanta, tires being dumped in the South River. In my general area, they dumped them on Big Millagrove Church property in the retaining fund.
Who are the commissioners down there?
Well, right now, I don't have a commission five still.
Oh, that's right.
And...
They got the CEO, though.
Well, I meant...
Okay, I...
They still have it lodged.
And even just a few weeks in, Representative Kendrick's district, a state DA caught somebody dumping, it was like a couple of thousand tires. Actually called him. He said that he was paid to dispose of them, but he was taking the money and just dumping them. So apparently, the law is not...
So you would like for us to do something legislatively to strengthen the law around...
Not enforcing the law.
Well, the problem is, apparently, DeKalb County, you know, they're not enforcing state law as it is. And I have all the respect for the police, but when you have the tag number, description of the truck, and they came out, take a report, and a guy had a can that had DNA on it, and you get a runaround for almost two years now, you know, guy's probably working for the county. I don't know. But it's, something's wrong when you have, when you're supposed to take a tire, you pay your dollar, it's supposed to be to pay to dispose of it, they take it off to be disposed of. But apparently, so-called licensed people are just dumping on the property.
Jeff, have you taken the same discussion during the comment phase at the county commission meetings?
Well...
I mean, I know you probably worked during the day, but...
She did go in there, but...
But have you?
It...
On her behalf, as you are tonight?
I really don't like going there.
I understand.
Really depressing, but...
Well, but yeah, but, and I know we're nicer, but...
I'll give Lee May a call on that and see if we can shake the tree on that.
But the issue is, is that apparently, these people who are licensed to dispose of tires are just dumping them.
I agree. They need to enforce the law. They need to enforce the law.
So my neighborhood, we will talk about, it's probably the last meeting, because my cluster of neighborhoods are now going to be squeezed by City of South DeKalb, Stonecrest, and just up down the road, the proposed maps from City of Lythonia. So we're...
Don't worry, I'm in no man's land.
And the last thing is the recycling law. It's, again, this is the law that's not working. Here in DeKalb, we've had people stealing from electric transformers, the lights on the highway, small businesses, residential.
Churches.
Large and small churches. I mean, we're talking thousands of dollars just for two or three dollars of copper. They hit four libraries in DeKalb. West of Chuffel got hit three times, and on the fourth time, they just destroyed the AC. They hit the school systems. So, I mean, these two laws need to be reworked out or something, redone, whatever. Thank you very much.
Well, we'd like to thank everyone for coming out. Great discussion. I apologize for having Senator Miller here. He reduces our IQ. However, no, he's a great addition. Thank you all for coming out. Again, we're doing this around the county. We'll be in the Malouf Auditorium on...
21st?
On the 21st. And so I invite you all to come out.
I'm his secretary.
If you didn't get your questions answered here. So with that...